A work session for April the 13th to order at this time. We're proud to have Sheriff Gary Gullidge with us this morning. Don't see any other elected officials. Marshall, if you'd bring the list forward for us, please. Got your phone on like I do? Turn those off. Thank you. And we're very pleased this morning to have Chaplain Tommy Leonard with Public Safety to come forward and lead us in our invocation and lead us in the Pledge of the Flag. Thank you, Tommy, for being here. Stand if you're able.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for this opportunity to pray this morning. Let us pray. Father God Almighty, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that you have made for us. You are the master and creator of all that is and all that will ever be. Father, Hebrews 13:17 says, "To obey your leaders and submit to their authority; they keep watch over you as men who must give an account. Obey them, so their work will be a joy, not a burden, for that would be of no advantage to you." Father, we thank you for all of your blessings. Lord, you have blessed Paulding County abundantly, and we praise you for that, Lord. Father, we pray that you continue to find favor in Paulding County, and we ask that you give our leadership the wisdom to lead our county in good times as well as in times of uncertainty, and that they would seek your wise counsel prayerfully as they make decisions that affect all of us in some way. And Father, I pray this morning for my brother and sister first responders and our military as they serve to protect our families, property, and businesses, asking that you build a mighty walled fortress around each of them and their families and return them home safely after each watch or tour of duty. Thank you, Father, for all of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to defend our freedom. And Lord, I lift up to you the employees of Paulding County Government that serve our citizens. My prayer is that for each of them and their families is that you would allow their cups to overflow with your grace, peace, and love. And Father God Almighty, we lift up those who are sick and suffering and ask you to comfort them and heal them if it would be your will. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to pray to you this morning with my brothers and sisters. We praise you, knowing that no power on this earth will prevail against you and your servants, and it's in Christ's holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Leonard, thank you for opening our meeting in such a fine manner. Minutes for the March 23rd, 2021 work session and the March 23rd board meeting minutes are available for review. Our announcements, Team Paulding recognized the Employee of the Month, Eric Mortensen, who's in the room with us, and he works for building maintenance, and we're going to watch the video at this time.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Renfro. I'm the Building Maintenance Manager for Paulding County, and I'm honored to have a third employee of mine to get nominated for Employee of the Month, Eric. Eric is part of our custodial staff. He takes care of the second floor here at the Administration Building, and Eric has really been a good blessing for our team. He just goes above and beyond to share his happiness with his people that he works around.
Hey, good morning. How you doing, man? Appreciate you coming by.
Yeah, yeah, just vacuuming, dusting.
Yeah, I need to take care of something first, though. Oh, jeez. Oh, man.
Congratulations. You're the Employee of the Month. Demonstrated superior performance, hard work, and dedication, April of 2021.
Hi, my name is Eric Mortensen. I work for the Paulding County Maintenance Crew and Janitorial Services. Been here about a little less than six months, and we start at 5:30 in the morning, particularly work on the second floor, and I'm proud to be part of Team Paulding.
Eric's got a great attitude, and he's a great example for all employees, and he certainly adds a lot to Team Paulding. Thank you, Eric. Also under announcements, Ms. Lori Ashmore, Water System Director, is going to introduce our new Water System Deputy Director, Mr. Ray Wooten.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ray's vacuuming against the wall. Let's ask him to stand. Ray Wooten actually joined Paulding County Water System back in 2019, and he joined us as a project manager. He's got a bachelor's in civil engineering from Memphis State, and he's a licensed PE in the state of Georgia. He joined our team after doing early retirement from Fulton County Public Works. He served there as Deputy Director of Technical Services. So he was managing capital and standby projects, budgeting, design, project management before joining us. So since he came to us, he's been on a lot of projects. I tell him he's got a nonstop energy, which he says is fully sugar and caffeine, but that his most visible projects were the East Hiram Sewer and the development regulation Ray has jumped right into his new role. He started with us on Monday last week as Deputy Director, and he's already successfully facilitated an emergency repair to a damaged pipeline, and it was done just in time to avoid costly permit limit violations. Ray and his family reside in Paulding County. He's very active in sports, and he tells me regularly that he enjoys working close to home, so he's more active in his two daughters' lives. Softball season has him leaving the office, and he's able to make it out to Burnt Hickory before practice starts. And we welcome Ray to our team.
And along with welcoming Ray, I'd like to say a heartfelt farewell to Darrell Vaughn, who has moved on to some other opportunities, and he's not here this morning, but if you listen to this, Darrell, you certainly have been a strong leader. Went to Washington DC with you, and you helped represent the Water Department there in front of several senators, so Darrell's been an instrumental part of the water and sewer team. We have no invited guests. Under bid awards, discuss action to award the purchase of a backup generator to service the emergency 911 center to TLS Electric in the amount of $148,900, and this will be funded through SPOST. We've got three reporters on this if needed, Ms. Pollard, Mr. Mumpford, and Mr. Renfro.
Good morning. So what we have is a backup to the backup. So we already have a backup generator. It is a natural gas generator. We've had a few problems with it. We had planned to have another backup generator, as 911 is one of those services that you absolutely don't want to go down. I'm going to discuss the process, and then David Mumpford, as well as Jimmy Renfro, is going to add to what I probably shouldn't be talking about so that you understand the need for backup to backup to 911. So we advertised this generator, and we did not get a response. It's a large generator, and Jimmy Renfro was a little bit concerned, and he found, actually, TLS was brought to him. They hold the state contract, and as you know, when we have a state contract, that just means that the state has already bid the service out or the equipment out, and so that was the case with this, and TLS submitted a bid for our particular project, and it came in almost to the dollar of what Mr. Renfro had in mind. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mumpford and Mr. Renfro for more information about the generator.
Good morning. So when we designed the building four years ago, got the building completed, we actually had a pad in place for a secondary generator. Our plan was always from the very beginning was to have a generator with a different fuel source available in the event of a natural gas. The current generator is natural gas powered, so if we lost natural gas in the area, we would have a diesel generator as backup, two different fuels. We have had a natural gas interruption once that didn't impact us. I mean, other than, we didn't need the generator during that time, but this literally is a backup to what our backup generator is. It'll power the entire facility, just like the current generator. It gives us a separate fuel source, and it also meets NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association, and ISO standards for a secondary generator, which they do. It's not a required standard, but it's a recommended standard for 911 centers. You can do it one of two ways. You can have a mobile generator available to pull in, spot and plug it up, or you can have a stationary generator with a different fuel source. And we opted for the stationary generator with a different fuel source because if the other generator fails, you don't really have time to go find a company and, you know, pull your secondary generator in. But this was something that was planned from the very beginning of the facility. We just had budgeted it out for a few years afterwards. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to. And thank the chairman, I think Commissioner Stover came out and brought us food yesterday. It's telecommunications week, so some of the commissioners came out and brought food, and I think maybe again tomorrow, so recognize our folks, and we appreciate that.
Y'all got any questions for me?
Thank you. Well, I always look forward to Ms. Lippman's update, quarterly update, so she's coming forward, Ms. Anne Lippman, the Community Development Director, to give us an update on building permits and business licenses.
Thank you, as always, for letting me come up here and share some of the data that I look forward to looking at every month. Let's see if I can make this bigger. This is a quarterly update based on the first three months of this year, and this time around, every time I do this, I want to change it a little bit so it's not the same old stuff. This year, I wanted to compare this year to last year in a lot of these scenarios, so this just shows the total number of permits issued each month last year versus this year, and as of this year, we've already issued 2,109 permits. This is the breakdown of permits issued in 2001. The top three are single-family residential, COs, and construction certificate of completion and trade permits. That's pretty standard. This shows the number of inspections by month. When permits go up, inspections go up, and this year, we've already done 3,413 inspections. Something that I wanted to highlight that's a little different, this time last year, every inspection had been done by a building inspector, but starting at the end of 2020, we saw a lot of people opting to use a private professional engineer. So this year, 7.5% of our inspections have been done by a letter or by an outside engineer. This chart just goes back to 2011, and it shows residential and non-residential, the growth. I had kind of hoped in 19 that the residential was going to start going down, but it went up last year, and seems to be the trend. We've already issued 777 permits this year, and this slide just shows the breakdown of the value. Just kind of interesting to point out that in three months, we've permitted the same, almost the same value of residential that we permitted in non-residential last year. Switching to single-family permits, Brian, you're not going to believe this, I track by month by post who gets the most permits. Until last month, I think there was once where Post 1 beat you, Post 1 and Post 2 beat Post 4 in March. How does third place feel? This is sort of where I got the idea to compare with last year. I send my permit data, I send it to the tax assessor, I send it to economic development, the airport has asked for a copy of it. Who else gets it? I think I'm going to start sending it to the water system so we can compare permits to their sewer taps that they sell. So when I sent this to the tax assessor, James Stokes pointed out that the growth of residential permits from this time last year is 132%. So that's what made me think, like, let's do some comparisons. So that's a comparison of permits, and this is the comparison of certificates of occupancy. Permits is a great way to track stuff, but to me, when you issue that certificate of occupancy, that's when the new citizen moves in. That's when they're able to do some permits. They get pulled, they never build them, some of them expire, so a CO is a much better way of tracking how many people are actually moving here. So I wanted to have a little fun. So this next slide, since January 1st of 2020, we've issued 1,863 certificates of occupancy. And what does that generate? That's generated 5,490 residents, and that would fill up the North Paulding Football Stadium and half of the Paulding County High School Stadium. It would also fill up the baseball stadium in Rome, but I'd never been there, so I couldn't visualize that. I got with the school system, they project that that number of COs would have generated 1,790 students. That's 895 elementary school students, and then roughly 488 each for middle school and high school. Got with the water system, that many residents would generate 324,540 gallons of water per day, and that's half of an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So every two days, those new residents use enough water to fill an Olympic swimming pool. Those residents, they would generate, and this is based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers' daily average of 9.4 vehicle trips per day. I think with the pandemic, and I think, talked to George, Paulding County is usually a little lower than that, so it's strange to think about that many people, at a minimum, probably generate 15,000 trips on a road every day. So just wanted to kind of have a little fun with the numbers and just see how the permits, how they're generating something in real life, day to day. Looking at occupational tax certificates, we currently have 3,339 occupational tax permits. Another thing we've seen an increase in is the number of new businesses. Based on the number last year versus this year, it's probably about 50 more, so it's about 25% more businesses, and this next, whoops. We've done a lot of work. We put every NACs code in every business we have, so these top four, which is construction, retail, trade, administration, and support, professional, scientific, and technical, comprises 65% of the new business licenses. And this one's the dullest slide there is. It's our home base versus commercial, and it is exactly the same as it was in December, so we're staying pretty consistent with 27% commercial versus 73% home occupations. And hopefully that was illuminating, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Very creative, Anne. Thank you very much. Enjoyed that, and you mentioned the school system. Of course, Mr. Hofstetler comes in for the planning and zoning meetings. If you could make sure he gets a copy of this.
That's who I forgot, that I send them a monthly report of all the permit data, and we break it down, we actually break it down for them by their high school, middle school, and elementary school zones, so it helps them with their planning.
Other questions, comments, observations? Thank you very much. We have no people that have signed up to participate in agenda items under the consent agenda. Do need to read them this morning, and it is fairly lengthy. Item number three is to approve the execution of the quitclaim deed for 400 linear feet of 20-foot-wide permanent sewer easement and a 40-foot-wide temporary construction easement bisecting parcel 36. That's at 217 Duncan Circle in Post 2. Number four is to authorize the chairman to enter into an intergovernment agreement with the city of Hiram for providing mowing services on the city of Hiram portions of US 278 Nebo Road in the amount of $10,310, located in 2 Posts, 1 and 3. Item number five is to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with 74 Cedar Crest LLC in the amount of $45,500 for mitigation to address traffic concerns on Cedar Crest Road located in Post 4. Item number six is to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Calvin Thompson for roadway improvements on Dooley Road related to the construction of the Thompson Ridge subdivision in Post 4. Number seven is authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Piedmont Residential in the amount of $74,100 for off-site roadway improvements in Post 4. Item number eight is to award a contract to Signature Tennis for the resurfacing of the Veterans Park walking trails in the amount of $26,200 in Post 2. Number nine is to appoint Mike Hayden to the Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission as the chairman's appointee with a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Number 10 is to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with H. D'Amani Investment Group LLC in the amount of $190,000 for off-site roadway improvements in Post 4. And number 11 is declare the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. It's the Sheriff's Office, Unit S-162, which is a Tahoe 2009 Chevrolet, and the serial number is on the sheet on the back desk if you want to read it. No old business moving into new business. Item number 12 is to discuss action to award the repair of the lake at White Oak Park to Corley Contractors with an estimated repair amount of $70,000 located in Post 1, and Parks and Rec and Library Director, Mr. Justice, is going to report.
Good morning. I didn't realize that Mr. Wooten was a part of our youth softball program. We're happy to have him as part of that. Look forward to seeing what he does with those young ladies out there. Also, need to let him know that if he gets out of line, that I'll be up here making a report to you guys in a different matter. So look forward to having him. The backdrop picture that you just saw after Anne's report there, see Upper Pond at White Oak Park, doesn't look like that today. A month or so ago, maybe two months ago now, we noticed that it was draining down. We enlisted the help of Bruce Coyle to help us figure that out, and what we found is that that main drain has a fault in it. It's got a hole in it somewhere. It was draining down, which we needed to do in order to make the repair, so we were just letting it go. We got some rainfall, maybe some debris, plugged itself back up. Now it's draining again. We're ready to go with that repair. Bruce has designed the system with your approval. As soon as that reaches that level again to where we can get in there, then we'll move forward with making those repairs and restoring that pond.
Any questions for Mr. Justice? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business number 13. Now, I've got an alibi around here, is what we called it in the military, and new commissioners are supposed to catch me on things like this? After reading the consent agenda items, what I'm supposed to say, are there any post commissioners that would like to move any of these agenda items to as a regular item for the afternoon voting? So I'll ask that question now. Hearing none, they'll stay at the consent agenda item, and new business number 13 is discuss action to, or you were supposed to catch me, you always catch me.
I was under the assumption that everybody was in agreement by silence. That's what I'm sticking to, at least.
Okay. Third trial on 13, discuss action to approve change order number two from Wastewater Industrial Solutions, WWIS, in the amount of $46,372 for the additional parts, materials, and labor required for the repair of two bracket green band screens at the Pumpkin WRF. Post 4, Ms. Ashmore.
Good morning again. The bracket green screens at Pumpkin Vine are the initial stage of the treatment process, and they protect the remainder of that treatment process. While long-term planning is to replace, we've been in a position where repairing them was necessary to protect the very intensive, expensive membranes that are the primary part of our treatment process. And upon disassembly and starting to put these back in place, our wastewater industries found that the seals, our track guides, and our wear bars also need to be replaced. We have a, one of the things we talked about was, what happens if we don't do this? Well, what we're talking about is these parts are to protect the investment that we're making into the rehabilitation of the equipment. There's no less expensive time to do the work than right now while it is disassembled, and we'll keep these, we'll keep these screens removing solids and protecting the membranes. Without these seals, the seals are probably the first thing that would go, and we would start having bypassing of the screens and having solids directly into the membranes. So we're requesting your approval for this change order.
So anyone have any questions? Good backup material, as always. So thank you very much, Lori. New business 14 is discuss action to adopt ordinance 21-03, an ordinance enacting a new Article 6 of Chapter 62 of the Code of Ordinances of Paulding County, Georgia, adopting an ordinance for a broadband-ready community, amending related provisions of Article 2 of Chapter 62 to recognize the enactment of the new Article 6 and for other purposes. Ms. Lippman.
Thank you. A little background on this, in 2018, Georgia, the state of Georgia created an Achieving Connectivity Everywhere, or ACE, Act for the promotion and deployment of broadband service. And as a part of this effort, the Georgia Broadband Development Initiative, which is a five-agency collaborative team, has been developed and created a program called Broadband Ready Community, and it's where communities make a commitment to improve broadband deployment that would, and there's two things that we need to do to be considered a broadband-ready community. One is to adopt this model ordinance, and the second is to formalize this commitment in our comprehensive plan, and we will be bringing that to you at your April 29th Planning Commission meeting. This action incorporates the model ordinance into Chapter 62 as a new Article 7 entitled An Ordnance for a Broadband-Ready Community. This is based on the state model, and it identifies Paulding County DOT Engineering as where anyone would go for a permit, and it copies all of the state requirements for the timeframes for getting a permit. We've incorporated this into our current ordinance, and we've also written this to be a part of Title 4 of our new Unified Development Ordinance, the telecommunications section. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Item 15 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the request of an additional Georgia Department of Transportation FY 2021 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, LMIG, in the amount of $345,612. Mr. George Jones.
Morning. This, the Georgia Department of Transportation issued a call for projects in March 21 to local governments. The LMIG program focused on low-cost safety improvements that could be implemented within the existing right-of-ways of off-system roadways that are likely to reduce the frequency and severity of traffic crashes. The program stipulated that the local government would be responsible for 30% of the matching funds. For this call for projects, our Traffic Operations Division recommended centerline and edeline rumble strips, thermoplastic line striping, and ray rumble strips, thermoplastic line striping, and raised pavement markers on five total roads for a total of 25.74 miles. Estimated cost for this work is $345,612. If awarded funding by GDOT, the 30% matching funds for this would come to $103,684, which would be provided from general funds. GDOT studies showed a 21% reduction in lane departures and a 24% reduction in roadside departures with rumble strip installation pre and post 24 months. Again, this is an application, we're not guaranteed the funding, but basically to go forward to request the funding from GDOT.
George, are those, those five roads that are listed, I was looking at that, and one thing came to mind, you know, we talked about some of the lifespans of these roads, are these, are these roads that are early on in their lifespan? Because once you put these in, if you resurface, that has to be done again, correct?
Exactly, Commissioner. You know, you're trying to look at roads that have been paved within the last few years, you don't want to do this on a road, that's going to be paved next year because you're wasting that investment. Exactly.
Do you have any advice for, if you just, you know, ease over to the center and hit that strip, and your wife yells at you, how you, what you do about that?
I'm not going to get involved with my wife at all, because I'm not going to get in trouble, because she listens to these board meetings, but I will just say, Dave, being the chairman of Paulding County, I know you drive safely, and you're making a joke, so I know you would.
Good answer. Any, any questions? Thank you, George. Number 16, discuss action to approve and purchase equipment provided in the Georgia Emergency Management Grant Award, SHO 17-145, in the amount of $301,905. Ms. Pollard.
I do enjoy these days that we have grant monies coming into the county, I like spending other people's money instead of our own. From what I understand, this is a grant that the SO had to work very hard to receive, and it is from the federal government, and it will provide the, this approval will provide for the approval of the grant, as well as the approval of the equipment that's being purchased for the F, for the SO in public safety. So unless you have any questions, that's all I have. I don't know if Sheriff Gullidge has anything else he'd like to add, or if that pretty much covers it.
Sheriff Gullidge, perhaps consider letting us ride in it, test it out? Any questions? Just excited to get that grant. Thank you, Tabitha. So you must have the next one. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the grant agreement with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to provide $50,000 to provide victim services within the Paulding County Judicial Circuit. Ms. Pollard.
Again, this is, this is a more routine grant, so this is an annual grant that we have received for the past several years. The District Attorney's Office receives grant funding to assist with personnel of victim services, and includes violence against women, as well as their VOCA grant, and this particular one will provide the VOWA, which is Violence Against Women, it's $50,000 towards personnel of two people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Monday we had violence against Dave, because he doesn't want to drive.
Yeah. That'd be a good addition, a rumble strip hits him. Let's see, item number 18 says discuss action to authorize the chairman to authorize a professional services agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for construction engineering inspection at a rate of $118 per hour not to exceed $165,200. George Jones.
The DOT is continuing to experience a steady workload with projects, multiple engineering-related duties. We just recently hired a vacant pre-construction, a position, actually, we just hired a person for a vacant pre-construction engineer position, started this week, however, it's going to take some time to get them up to speed on the work we do. Another engineer, our senior pre-construction engineer, is leaving, he's being deployed on active duty beginning in May, and he'll be gone for approximately six months. During that time, leaving the engineering division very light in terms of personnel who can do the work that we, that we do. The workload is expected to remain constant in the near future. We have multiple in-house design projects, consultant management projects, development review, stormwater. Our engineering will need expertise to keep up with the demand that we experience every day. Heath and Lineback Engineers is a firm that we use for our on-call support, and they have offered to provide a qualified engineer to perform these duties while our senior pre-construction engineer is out at a rate of $118 an hour, all-inclusive. These funding will be provided from general funds for this work, and can answer any questions if you may have any.
Typically, do you have the same individuals all the time, you're kind of familiar with Paulding, or is it mixed up, or varies?
With Heath and Lineback, they have the same project manager typically, they have other engineers working under them that do the work. It was a few years, it was actually quite a few years back, I think, when we were at the 329 Industrial Way North, we actually did have someone from Heath and Lineback who was stationed at that time, providing engineering services, because again, the workload, we didn't have the personnel to keep up with it, but that was probably back in the 2006, 2008 timeframe.
And finishing up with number 19, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with George Tomas Homes in the amount of $30,534 for the construction of a left-turn lane on Old Carney, Old County Farm Road into the Moses Middle School, which is in post four.
As you said, George Tomas Homes is the owner of a 63.42 acre of tract, acre, acre tract of property along County Farm Road. The owner of this property, as part of the rezoning stipulations, agreed to install a left-turn lane on Old County Farm Road at the entrance to the proposed development. The development's called the Park at Ansley Farms. The entrance to this development is exactly opposite Moses Middle School. The entrance to Moses Middle School from Old County Farm Road does not have a left-turn lane at this time. George Tomas Homes has agreed to enter into development agreement with the county to perform the extra work needed to provide a left-turn lane of 160 feet for Moses Middle School on Old County Farm Road. The cost estimate for this additional work to construct a full left-turn lane is, is a $30,534. We, Paulding DOT, could not build that turn lane for that same cost. From comparing unit prices, the cost of the additional work is equivalent to what we would spend, not, not including the mobilization, project management, traffic control, et cetera. Basically, we are requesting the board to contribute $30,534 to the owner of the Park at Ansley Farms for the construction of this left-turn lane as part of their project. And I can answer any questions if you may have any.
Pretty quiet group of post commissioners today.
They did their homework, Dave.
They did their homework, that's right. Thank you, George, and as you're sitting down, since you've kind of had the lion's share of new items, through Rebecca, our clerk, a letter came in via email from Ms. Stacy Farmer, resident of Hiram, she lives in post three, and I'm just going to read what she said, because it pertains to DOT work. As the commissioners know, we generally get complaints, but this is not one. Ms. Farmer says, "Good morning, I just wanted to send a note and say whoever decided to put a roundabout on Ridge Road, Cochran Store Road, is my lifetime hero. Have a great day." So that's the conclusion of our regular business. It's great to have our airport director in today, Terry Tibbetts, and I'm going to have to call out Chief Hess also for, we introduced Mr. Ray Wooton, but I had a young lady come by that's one of the newest marshals that maybe the people in the room would like to hear about. Put you on the spot, didn't it?
Don't mind me being on the spot for that.
Dave, forget it, that.
We do have a, a new deputy, Ms. Vanessa Newsom, and she comes to us from Chattahoochee Tech, she's also spent some time at Cobb County PD, so we're definitely glad to have her aboard with us.
Way bet, Vanessa. Glad to have her. All right, at this time, this is when we leave a little segment at the end for commissioners to make any announcements or make any comments, and we'll start to my far right over here with Commissioner Dunn, if he has anything, it's totally optional.
Thank you, Dave, I just want to say, I want to give a shout-out to Chief Hess and the Marshals Department for, I, I know all of us, been getting a lot of ongoing discussion about litter and, and increased litter on the roads, and Chief Hess and, and a lot of his marshals been spending a lot of extra time with the landfill, passing out pamphlets and, and having personal conversations with people coming in the landfill, so thank you, Trevor, I appreciate that, taking a proactive role, see if we can cut down on the litter.
I also want to say thank you, Keith stole my thunder, so I was going to talk about keeping your litter inside your car, or whatever, and throw it away in where it belongs. Picking up trash is very expensive. We can alleviate that if each person would put their trash where it belongs. Again, it's very expensive for the county to, to pick, keep the trash picked up, so just please, keep, pick up your trash.
I'd just like to thank all the department heads, recognize Trevor and, and recognize George for this, Ms. Farmer's letter, but our department heads work for the citizens day in, day out, to produce a good product and provide good quality of life, so I'm just proud of all of them. I bet our county administrator might have something on his mind.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what Commissioner Dunn and Commissioner Kaker had just talked about. If you go back several months, we've had kind of a discussion about litter, and I know Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission's been out and strategically done a couple of areas, and Commissioner Kaker's mentioned that a couple of times, but wanted to go ahead and let, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to let you know, and the commissioners know, and probably know, that we're taking this litter situation very seriously. We've gotten together some department heads, and I want to send a shout-out to several people today. We're going to, we're going to continue to address this, and I want to come back probably in two weeks with a little bit more detail, but we want to hit this litter situation from all angles, that's awareness, education, and I'm glad, Commissioner Dunn, you mentioned about Chief Hess and, and his efforts with his folks to go up there, and that's part of this, is education and awareness of it, you know, folks going to the transfer station, make sure that load is covered. Because what's happening is stuff comes out of the back of the truck, or it, it comes out of a vehicle, and then it comes out on the side of the road, and then we end up having to send a, a detail up there to pick it up, or we've got to spend extra money to, to pick it up. But also too, we're going to be looking at things internally, what we can do, hitting certain areas, like Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission does, so we're going to do that. I want to thank Sheriff Gullidge for sending somebody to our team meeting with his inmate workforce, and also George Jones for sending, well, he was actually there, and we, we had some discussions with that. So we're going to have a comprehensive plan that we're going to roll out, which is going to also include Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission. So I'm looking forward to a full report next meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity just to go ahead and roll that out in connection with both post one and post two today. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, you all, for being here today, Richard, it's good to see you from New Era, thanks for being here always. We do have a requirement for executive session for pending and potential litigation, so make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we go into executive session for pending and potential litigation. And is there a second?
Second.
Second, back to Mr. Kaker, all those in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned.